Okay, now we are all set. Evelyn, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Marcus.
Yeah.
Trustee Weekly.
President.
Trustee McAvoy. She's online. Okay. Vice President Wells.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here. Item 4.2, Report Out on Closed Session from February 7, 2024. 3.1 Conference with Real Property Negotiators, No Action Was Taken. 3.2 Public Employee Performance Evaluation, No Action Was Taken. Welcome, everybody, to February 6th, Ordinating 2024. Hang on just a second.
February 7.
Okay, it's February 7th already. I missed a day somewhere. Si necesita traducción en español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno el signo de número para la contraseña. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card available at the entrance and give it to Evelyn Campos. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called on at the time the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person, per topic, unless otherwise noted. Consent items are voted on simultaneously with one motion and are not debated or discussed by the board. The action indicated on each item is deemed to have been considered in full, and action will be taken as worded in the item. If you want to discuss an item on consent, please let us know before we change the agenda so that we can pull it from consent items for discussion. And before we move on to changes to the agenda, I just want to thank the students from Taft and from Clifford for the artwork that we have in the boardroom right now. We have Taft 5th grade science art on photosynthesis, and you can actually, it does light up if you press by the sun. So feel free to play around with that. And then over here, we have Clifford 6th grade art inspired by Shaw Chang's painting Bamboo and Wind. So please do enjoy the artwork. Moving on to 6.1 Changes to the Agenda. We're gonna, we've been asked to move 13.2 and 13.3 from Action to Consent. That's the CSEA Sunshine Proposal. There any other changes?
Hi, Janet. The speakers cards is for RCTA. They want to comment on that one.
We're gonna take that during oral communication.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve. Seconded.
I guess we didn't have to roll call vote, huh?
Trustee Marcus.
Aye.
Trustee Weekly.
Aye.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Vice President Wells.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. Okay, we are in oral communication. We have a card from Brian Kegel and Aaron Washburn. If you can turn the microphone on, the little person up there.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, board members, administrators, and community members at home. I'm Brian Kegel. I'm a PE teacher at North Star Academy. I'm also the Chair of the RCTA Negotiations Chair. I'm sorry, Negotiations Team.
And my name is Aaron Washburn. My pronouns are they, them, and theirs. I am the President of the Redwood City Teachers Association and Music Teacher at Roy Cloud.
We're officially proposing our, or offering our Sunshine Proposal, which officially opens the negotiations with the school district. And we are opening Articles 4, 6, and 8. Article 4 is Working Hours. Article 6 is Compensation. And Article 8 is Class Size.
And just for a little insight of why we're opening these articles, RCTA's aim with our proposals is to protect our early elementary students from overcrowding in their classrooms to ensure that our students receive well-thought-out lessons every day from the best educators the Bay Area has to offer because our students deserve the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Evelyn, do we have any other speakers cards?
No more speakers cards.
Thank you. Let's see, we are on Bond Consent Items. The motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, night. Bond Program Consent Time.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Marcus.
Aye.
Trustee Weekly.
Aye.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Vice President Wells.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. Thank you. We have no bond program action items, so we'll move on to 11.1 Information on Financial Audit Report for our CSD. We have our auditor here. Thank you.
That's me. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Excuse me. My name is Nathan Edelman with I'd Bailey. I am the independent external auditor, and you have in the, in the packet, you have the audited financial statements fiscal year end June 30, 2023. Give you a quick 10,000-foot overview of the scope and the results of the audit. First of all, really, the purpose of the audit, the scope of the audit is to verify that those financial statements, make sure that those comply with the governmental accounting standards. So management, Rick Edson, Mr. Edson and his team, they do an amazing job. They put together the financial information. They then give it to us, and our job is to ask questions, and really, it's come in after the fact and just verify that cash is correct, payables, receivables, verify that the numbers on the financial statements are correct. Through doing that, if there's what's called internal control deficiencies, those are required to be reported out as well. Then there's state and federal compliance. District receives a number of grants, and there are certain things that the granters say, US auditors, go in and, and make sure that the entities are doing those, and the results of those are called out in the audit as well. Opinion on the financial statements, the results of applying all this, it's a clean, or what we call an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which really means that the financial statements are correct. They comply with the governmental accounting standards, and and that's what you want. That's what the auditor should be telling you. The, there are, there were no internal control deficiencies. There were a number of state compliance, state compliance findings that are reported, detailed in, in the back of the report. And I guess, you know, I don't, don't want to be looked at minimizing findings, but if you I see a lot more findings than, than you folks do here, and it can be substantially more severe than, than the ones you see here, and I think three of those findings, actually, you know, the district is aware of them, and, and they, they weren't the result of the auditors coming into things, that there's a plan to, to remediate, and the state still requires auditors to call those out as audit findings, because that's how, that's how they are, that's how they're tracked. There's also an opinion on federal compliance or uniform guidance, and, and there were no no audit findings with respect to any of the, the federal grants, so with that, I will, I'll turn it over to, to you folks, and I'm happy to, to try and answer any questions as best I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Rick, for continuing the, the job in the business office and helping us, you know, put together you know, no findings for the financial statements. We knew about many of the state things that were found before. We've, we've already approved them as they came through for many of them, so I didn't see anything that was a surprise in there. So thank you, Nathan, for coming tonight, presenting this audit, and for running it once again for the district.
Alisa, did you have any?
I'd say get over to what Mike just said. So thank you very much, Rick, and your team for all that you did, and it looks to me like a pretty clean audit overall, so I appreciate all the work that everybody did.
Yeah, great. It's, looks great. Thank you very much. All right, thank you for being here. Okay, 11.2 Communications Update, Our CSD Logo Redesign Project.
So we have Mr. Quintana here this evening. That's going to give you an update on the logo redesign and also the different designs that were done at the school sites. It was a true collaborative effort, so Jorge, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you. So President Lawson, trustees, as Dr. Baker explained, we have a very exciting presentation for you tonight, and it is that we finalized the project of updating the district logo as well as the logo for the 12 schools. It's been a, an exciting project to work with the very supportive community that we have in Redwood City, teachers and administrators and parents as well. Before we get into details about that project, just really quickly going over a little bit about the Department of Communications and Community Engagement. You know quite well that it's made up of yours truly and our community liaison, which is Ms. Ramon. And these are the different responsibilities that we have, how we did, we divided up our work in communications. And Ms. Ramon is here in the audience, joining us as well. We have different priority areas on how we focus our work for the school district and its community. These priorities can change every three to five years. You do an audit, you evaluate, and you relaunch your communications program. And using what you learn about the needs of the organization and as well as the, what the community is asking to learn, of course. So these are the different priority areas that we focus on currently. Pre-pandemic, pre-2019, the big priority was marketing, marketing the individual schools. That has changed quite a bit. Obviously, we were interrupted with our work due to the pandemic. We were in crisis communications mode for a couple of years. Now that we're getting back on track, we're focusing more on the, the district's strategic work. And you'll probably notice that we talked a lot about, about the student goal setting conferences, a lot about math this year, trying to show our community the good work that the school district is doing. So what we're talking about tonight, though, is Priority Number 7, which is managing the branding elements for the organization and the communications tools as well. And one of the big projects that we've had for some time now, it was to update the district logo. There was a need to do that. Ever since I joined the school district, I know that many individuals have come up to me to tell me that that was a priority for the district to update that logo. The last time the district did that was back in the 1990s, when that, our current logo was created, as well as a similar version for all 12 schools fitting under one brand as it should be. In 2015, the, my predecessor, the school district launched a marketing campaign. And so since then, because that logo is, that tagline was a little bit visually appealing, we've been using it as a logo as well, and that's the Me Choose Love tagline. And so it's been a combination of both since then. And so this project was about updating first the district logo, and there you have it. It is a, the one-room schoolhouse with the textbooks and the tree. And I've heard throughout time that we wanted to keep the tree, but we did want to do away with the one-room schoolhouse and the textbooks. And the objective, and, and this is just showing you what the logo looks like on apparel. This is the daughter of a Redwood City teacher who retired in the 1980s. She came into the building, and I had to talk to her about what she was wearing. So you can see right there that, that logo, the official logo of the school district. You can see that there's four colors in this logo. We have the tree, the red house, the, I think, orange textbooks, and then we have the name of the school district in the mustard yellow. And you'll see the mustard yellow a little bit later on. It's coming back to the new official logo along with the green. And then we have a third color that is completely new to the school district. Objective number two was to bring all the schools, again, under one brand, together with the school district. We do understand that there was a need for different schools to independently update their logos, and, and we understand, and we, we were very sensitive to that throughout this process. And finally, we also asked to create a style guide for the school district, as was for the schools, to help all the different individuals who use the, the logos, to help them to guide them with how to use the logo and to guide them also with the codes for the exact colors for the school district and for the schools as well. So in the spring of 2022, the Department of Communications and Community Engagement, we launched an RFP process, and we interviewed four different design firms, and we settled with a design firm from out of Dallas, Texas. We were looking for someone that obviously had the experience to be creative, someone that understood the need to engage a community as part of this process, and someone that was, and understood also, public sector, that we have to be financially responsible to the organization. And so we settled with Small Hat Studio, which was a great firm to work with. We formed in the fall of 2022 a committee. Two of you joined us on that committee. We have teachers, and we had parents, and also district office staff. You'll notice that some of the staff, they have moved to other schools or other positions, but I did want to show to you the original role that they had when they did join the committee. And two of those committee members are here tonight, and you'll hear a little bit from them a little bit as we introduce the schools. The role of the district committee was obviously to help the firm understand our district, understand our culture. We know that all organizations have their own unique cultures. We wanted for the firm to understand that, to understand the experience that our families and teachers have in our organization, and also the rich, the long and rich history of Redwood City School District here in our community. And so they participated in several meetings with the design firm. First, the first meeting was all about research, understanding the organization and our needs and our success story as well. Then they came back and introduced to the committee several different layouts, several different proposals. And the job of the committee was to continue to narrow those down until meeting number four, when we ended up with two final designs. We obviously wanted to hear as many voices as possible as part of this process, so we designed the process for the school principals and assistant principals to have a voice in the process and pick the final logo based on those two final logos, those two finalists. And so they did, and that was in January of 2023. And so before we introduced the final logo for the school district, these are the different adjectives that the committee provided to the design firm as part of the district, as part of the research. You can see that the ones that are highlighted are the ones that the committee mentioned the most. So we, our brand is that we are accepting and welcoming, caring, we are a community, we are diverse, we are inclusive, innovative, and we are supportive. And so here is that logo out of, out of that research. And so when we show the logo to different individuals, different people have a different interpretation of it. But I can tell you that the arch that you see right there represents some of the historic architecture that you can, that you find at some of our facilities and some of our schools, which, doing some research with some of the architects, I'm told that it's Spanish Revival for sites such as Garfield and the Orion Campus. The committee talked a lot about history, that they wanted to somehow show that history on the logo. So you see that we've added the date of when our CSD was established back in 1895. And we also wanted to show that we are a modern school district with, that we are teaching our students and preparing them for high school, college, and careers. So you, you can see that the tree is a very modern version, which is a little bit different than the, the historic feature for the architecture. And it's, the, the, the feature is also a window which welcomes individuals into Redwood City. And the tree represents our schools that are on the hills and all the way to our schools on the bayside, which is the water, and that's a very modern way of showing water as well. So that's the, the, one of the two logos that we showed to principals and assistant principals, and that's the one that they were excited about most. And so here is the RCD updated logo. And here is the version in Spanish. As you know, we serve a, a community where a lot of our constituents are monolingual Spanish speakers. So when we prepare any kind of information in Spanish, we want, we do want to show the logo in Spanish, and as well as other documents that we are required to prepare, we want to have that available in Spanish as well. And so here are the official colors of the school district. We are keeping the RCD green that our CSD is known for. The yellow is coming back from the original current official logo, and the light blue is a new color that we are introducing to our district. We told the designer that we were open to change, but that we also wanted, we told them the, he cannot touch the forest green, that our CSD is known for that green, and we needed to keep that. And so the school, the process for the schools was very similar to the one that we did with the district. We, knowing now what the district logo, the parameters that were set by the district logo, we moved into working with the schools. We worked with the school principal, the committee representative for that school, and also we worked with anybody else that the principal brought into, into the, into the work. And some of it was the assistant principals, the community school coordinators. And at the end, when the school reached those two final logos at the end too, each school had the opportunity for their own community engagement based on the needs of their community. So we had principals who took the final two logos to school council, maybe PTO, maybe during the principal coffee meetings, maybe to staff. And I very proudly report that Kennedy and MIT both had their students vote for their final logo. And so here are the meetings that we had with the different schools. And we started in order of the schools that have done recent work with their own logos. Again, we wanted to be respectful and sensitive of the artists that had worked with our schools, and so we started with them. So the first one was North Star about a year ago. Here is the logo for North Star. And, and, and there's two different versions. As you can see, on the left-hand side, you have what the designer calls a stacked logo. On the right-hand side, it's the horizontal version. And we also have that available in Spanish as well. And then we moved on to Roy Cloud. And that is Cloud in English, Cloud in Spanish. Then we worked with Adelante Selby and Kennedy together for the reason that the parent representative represented both schools. So we were, we were, we were trying to avoid of her sitting through six meetings as opposed to just three. So we worked together with the two schools for that, for, for, for that reason. So here's Adelante Selby in English, Adelante Selby in Spanish, and that's Kennedy in English, Kennedy in Spanish. And then we moved on to our two schools that have the same mascot. We wanted for them to work together so that they could have the opportunity to come up with a unique dolphin for each school. So now, she needs no introduction, but Ms. Jenny Overby is here, the wonderful 3rd grade teacher from Clifford, who will present Clifford to you.
First of all, I would like to say thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak with the board and our community. I'm not sure where the camera is. Hi. Thank you so much for allowing us to come as committee members and share the amazing experience that we had over the last few years working with Jorge, with the amazing committee, our trustees, to rebrand our entire district because we have changed so much over the years. But we are also at the base of it, still rooted in community, still rooted in, in family, and this really kind of felt like that type of experience for me. So after we came through and the final RCD logo was determined, we sat down and said, okay, now we have to do schools. They need to be cohesive with continuity. They need to celebrate our immensely diverse educational settings, but still be the same. We need to have the same fonts, but be unique. We need to highlight the mascots, but also the school name. They need to be recognizable, but not too literal. It, it was easy, right? Piece of cake. But it was such a collaborative experience, especially working with Taft because they are dolphins and we are as well. What worked for Taft didn't work for Clifford. What worked for Clifford didn't work for Taft, so I'll, I'll be speaking on behalf of Clifford. Unlike other schools, we had not had an update. So we had been working with the good old one from the very beginning, with the dolphin in the circle from the 90s, also the Me Choose Love. Also, several different PTOs had come through with different renditions, so we were a bit of a hodgepodge of logos. And so we kind of thought about what did we really want? What did we really want to highlight? And what we wanted to highlight was our community. It's something that Clifford is incredibly proud of. We wanted it to feel like Clifford, but still feel like part of the Redwood City School District, diverse, inclusive, family-oriented. We wanted to honor the fact that we have TK students which need to be family-friendly, and we have 8th graders, which are super cool. So we had to have something that worked to all of our audience. And we wanted to keep the sea because we have a lot of things that we identify with the sea. It's being inclusive, it's welcoming, we are a circle, we are a family. We wanted to use that sea. And we really wanted to keep the blues. We loved our blues. It kind of hearkens back to the oceans of the Clifford Dolphins. So what we did, and, and on top of all that, we wanted it to be streamlined and modern. So thankfully, we came up with a beautiful logo that we think is simple, but meaningful, works for our entire community, still has the silhouette of the dolphin, but it hearkens into our community of welcoming and opening and bringing people in. We're very proud of it. We, we think that it's going to be a really great addition to our new school, which has been painted. Thank you to our amazing community of taxpayers and our Board of Trustees. With the Measure T money, we were able to have our school repainted, and that new logo is going to look fabulous. So I would like to introduce the new Clifford logo. Thank you so much.
And here's Clifford in Spanish. And moving to Taft, here's Taft. And just a fun fact, because the, the design firm is in a different time zone, we sent to them several different pictures of our facilities when they were working on the different schools. So we sent them a picture of Taft's new beautiful building, and they noticed that the building has a lot of lime green on it. And so they wanted to bring that into the logo since it's usually the other way around, right? The logo sets the tone for everything else. So he wanted to make sure that the logo and the building were cohesive and part of one. So that's where you see the, the lime green on the Taft logo, which is new for Taft. And here's Taft in Spanish. Moving on to Orion Alternative, now I want to introduce you to Mr. Jeff Louis, who is a parent at Orion. Jeff is very engaged and very active on that campus. I usually, when I visit that campus, I usually find them in the STEAM lab working with Mr. Howell. But here he is as part of this committee to talk about the, the, the process for Orion's logo.
So not sharing?
So not show the screen? Gotcha.
Okay. Thanks. So yeah, my name is Jeff Louis. I am a parent as well as a teacher resident at Orion. So I'm in the process of getting my teaching credentials. So first and foremost, I want to thank the board for having me here and for the opportunity to have Orion in this project. And I wanted to thank Jorge for inviting me to attend. I'm super grateful that I was invited to participate in the logo committee. I think I was at the right place at the right time. I was dropping my kids off at the time. And then Principal Catherine was like, would you like to join the logo committee? I said, what is that? I said, absolutely. I would love to participate. I think it was great. And I'm honored to be here today. So the Orion Alternative is a joining of two unique programs. The parent co-op and the Mandarin immersion program. They came together in 2019. And it's exciting for them to have one logo to represent both programs. Principal Wong during our assembly, she's always telling the students that each one of them is a star in the Orion constellation. And, and we're excited now to see that Orion constellation in this logo. We know Orion students and staff and parents will be wearing it proudly. In fact, my family has three hoodies and I think we all know that in the Bay Area, you can never get enough sweaters with hoodies. So the logo design process was very enjoyable. The designers had a challenge with Orion. Thinking about how to merge two very unique programs from an alternative program, Mandarin immersion. How do you get those two cultures to kind of blend? The final design was incredible and I wanted to also acknowledge Chris Holstein. So Chris Holstein was part of the, he's a parent of the Mandarin immersion program. He couldn't be here tonight, but he provided a ton of insight and feedback during the whole process. And so funny story, while I was actually helping with the Orion design process, I was sitting actually in the Roy Cloud parking lot. Cause at the time I was a teacher resident there until I moved over to Orion. So it was interesting. I was able to actually glean some ideas from Roy Cloud while I was thinking about Orion. And so our logo, when we were thinking about it, again, similar Jennifer, it was kind of a hodgepodge, right? When we would see our shirts, we'd see our folders, everything. There was Mandarin logos, there was stars in different places. And so the PTO had different designs. And so we tried to find a way to merge it all together and we looked at different colors and we settled on a strong dark blue. We wanted to make sure that red was in there. And then also representing that window and we're proud to have that Orion constellation in the logo. So again, we're grateful for the, how the school board cares about both programs. It's so important for our school to have that one logo that shows our community is united in one school. It also represents also in the logos where both names can be on the logo. So the new Orion light logo shown here today will make us feel more connected and will absolutely build on the school's pride and our school values. And I guess we'll share the logo once.
So this is Orion as a whole school. And as Mr. Louis mentioned, you can see the Orion constellation through that window. He is Orion in Spanish. And again, being very sensitive to our two wonderful programs on that campus. Co-op program. Mandarin version. Oh, actually this is co-op in Spanish. Mandarin immersion. And Mandarin immersion in Spanish. Now we move on to the Mustangs, the Huskies and the Bulldogs. So here is the Mustangs in English. You can see that this is the very same Mustang that the school currently has. The only touch up that the designer did is he said, taking a little, taking away some of the detail on the Mustang. Cause it's easier to reproduce and it also modernizes the Mustang a little bit. So that is Henry Ford in English, Henry Ford in Spanish. Here are the Huskies. That's Hoover in Spanish. Here we have MIT. MIT in Spanish. And finally Garfield and Roosevelt. Here's the Gators. Garfield in Spanish. The raccoons in English. Roosevelt in Spanish. And this is a surprise. During the process, two of our schools asked for a third version for Spiritware. And we were in the middle of the process and of course we did not want to leave any school behind. So we asked the designer to do the same for all 12 schools. So here are the Alebrijes. And this just shows the different colors if they want to wear a blue t-shirt. So. Here are the Dolphins. You can see that it just has the, the name of the school on the top and the, and, and these schools ask for the, the name of the mascot to be spelled out for Spiritware. Here are the Gators. The Mustangs. Huskies. The Cougars. The Bulldogs. The Griffins. The Stars. The Raccoons. The Thunderbolts. More Dolphins. And one for the district. And finally, this is just a sample of the style guide. The, the district will have one for the district logo and one for each school as well. And thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I love that presentation. I have a couple of questions and comments, but I want to open up to the board first.
I don't have any questions other than thank you to everyone that participated in this long process, I guess. Everything looks beautiful and I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot of sweatshirts and hoodies all around Redwood City with everyone's pride. So thank you very much.
Looks pretty cool. Thank you for the thoughtful process. Do we adopt the logo? Is there a, nope? No, okay. We just check it out.
For being informed.
Cool work. Thank you.
Thanks Jorge. I feel like you had a vision, you know, a couple of years ago about how these logos could come together. And it's really neat to see how cohesive, you know, all the schools look together with the district logo. That was, I guess this, just seeing the packet on, on, over the weekend was the first time getting to see all the school ones together. And as you page through them, you really see the consistency there and they're all unique, but that was really cool. It was a lot of fun to be part of this committee. The first thing that I loved was just the membership there. I loved hearing about the lifelong connections that so many of the staff have with the district and the, and Redwood City in general. So that was just a lot of fun. Really enjoyed working with Small Hat. I thought that they were a great partner. I, you know, appreciate it. And I'm, I'm like, really think that the outcome came out great. Thanks Jeff and Jennifer for coming and, you know, being, first of all, being part of the committee. And then also just coming here and presenting your schools and how the logo worked out there.
Go ahead, Alisa.
Oh, thank you. Thanks so much. I really loved seeing the whole package as well. It was great. Sort of felt like the big reveal tonight. And I agree. I really like all the logos. I like, I like how we kept the window, you know, in each of the school logos to kind of blend them together. But it's, it's very much, you get to see the personalities coming out in their mascot. So that's fun. The one question I had Jorge is, are we still going to be using the tagline meet choose love RCSD?
So I, I think the, the new logos retire the tagline of meet choose love. I think that it was a great campaign that energized the, the school district. But, but I think now we're moving back to having the official logo for the school district.
It was, I, I really enjoyed participating on that, on the committee. I felt like Small Hat Studio was such a great partner to work with. And I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he was really responsive to feedback from the committee. I'm thinking like when he brought some of the logos that a lot of us really liked, but it had the Golden Gate Bridge. And we just said, you know, Redwood City doesn't really associate with the Golden Gate Bridge. Let's San Francisco. And he was like, I hear you. Okay. Moving on to the next thing. And some of us pointed out, some other are like, oh, we feel like that could be misinterpreted as something inappropriate. And he was like, got it? Taking that out. And so it was really fun working with him on that. I'm really happy with the final outcome. I love the arch and the way it's included in all of the school logos. And I love the way that he branched out of the arch too with some of them. I think it's, it, it's very clean and modern and welcoming. I do have one question. I noticed a couple of the schools do not have their established year. Orion makes sense to me because there are two different programs that were established different years, but Roy Cloud doesn't. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah. So as, as part of the process, like I mentioned, we did want to give different committee members a voice throughout the whole process. And the, the school committee for Roy Cloud wanted to stay very aligned to the current logo, which just says, you know, Roy Cloud on it. And so that, that was a decision that was locally made in. And so we, you know, accepted that and respected that.
Thank you.
No, they, they look great. And so Janet and I remember the schoolhouse, right, Jen?
Oh, yeah.
That's been around forever, Michelle, right? So.
I was a student when that.
We were just becoming teachers. So it's a, a, a change, such a change from so many years ago, moving forward. I thank you and the committee that traversed and kept going, even though you were showing me things like, oh, I don't know, I don't know. But they look great. They look really great. Congratulations to you and your team and thank you for all the hard work. Now we'll retire the little schoolhouse and move forward and a lot of swag to buy now, right? So get that, those orders ready. So you have. You ready? Oh, well, that's a piece, that's a piece.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's right. Our name badge needs to change, right? Yeah. Cause that's the little, that's right. I forgot all about that. It's been around for a long time. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are moving on to 11.3 report on RCSD Thrive Manual as part of the homeless initiative practice.
Yes, we'll have our students director, Antonio. Por favor.
Please speak in that microphone before we share the screen, then it'll.
Speak, speak, just say something.
Hello?
So they have to remove the.
Stop sharing.
Stop sharing. And then when they're ready to present, we can. So it actually stayed.
It'll stay on.
There you go. All right, Ms. Griffiths. Are you starting?
Yes, yes, Dr. Baker.
Hey, perfect.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Baker, President Lawson and the Redwood City Board of Trustees, Redwood City School District Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to present our Thrive Program. Thrive stands for teamwork, housing resourceful, innovative, voices and power. The Thrive Program is a, is modeled after our homeless innovative program that was established four years ago. With a partnership with CZI, Life Moves and Kennedy School. Tonight our presenters are Antonio Perez, Director of Student Services. Liz Calderon, District Community School Coordinator. Elsa Iceboro, District HIP. And Community School Data Coordinator. And William Gomez, HIP and Thrive Consultant, a former Life Moves employee and a, and a former district partner who's now our consultant. So I just want to point out before we turn the presentation over to our presenters and Will will be our first. I want to highlight that this is a work that is a cross-department collaboration. Both with student services and with the community schools. So I would like to now turn it over to Will.
Baker, do I have control?
Yeah.
Make sure. There it goes. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, people behind me. Well, before we jump in really to the meat of our work, we, we wanted to center this conversation with the regional reality we all operate from. And I don't think it's any surprise to anyone of, you know, the most pressing issues we face here in our community, which are housing affordability and homelessness. So we have a few numbers we thought were relevant to share. The first being the average monthly rent here in San Mateo County, which stands at $3,300. Which is an astronomical amount. And with that, it's highlighting research that was conducted by Stanford in 2022. That highlights really the unseen crisis of housing instability in our community. And what that research goes on to highlight is that 2,600 public students here in San Mateo County experiencing housing instability. Three years prior to the pandemic. So from 2016 to 19. That research goes on to highlight that those students that face housing instability are four times more likely not to graduate high school. Than their stably housed peers. And another thing that we feel relevant to share is that those students that don't graduate or that fail to earn a GED. Are also four times more likely to experience an episode of homelessness as an adult. So it's really this context that again, as we highlight the work, we're, we're looking to address an impact through the work of Thrive. So I'll now pass it over to Antonio.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, to the audience in Zoom and the people present here. We would like to give you some context before we dive into the Thrive Program. Outline here, you can see the definition of the McKinney-vento Act. Which basically the McKinney-vento Act is the guidelines given by the federal government. And also the, what the guidelines that we use in the district to identify students experiencing homelessness. And provide additional services. The McKinney-vento Act is defined as individuals who lack a fixed, regular and adequate nighttime residence. Fixed meaning that the residence is permanent and not subject to change. Regular meaning that the residence is one that is used on a normal basis. And it's a standard and consistent. And adequate residence meaning that is one that is sufficient for meeting both the physiological and physical needs. You know, typically met in home environment. It is also important to the, to name that this definition also includes situations where the students are doubled up. Meaning that they are sharing a housing with others due to an economic hardship or, or a similar reason. This means that the families might be living in an RV or a garage or, you know, renting a room. Or sharing a space with multiple families. As well as children who are might be. Uh, as well as a children who are might be living in a shelter or in a motel or hotel. This slide shows, um, the demographics in respect of, you know, our enrollment for the past five years. And it is important to point out here that, you know, slightly we have a decline in enrollment. However, we have, um, also an increase of students being identified as, you know, as being, um, meaning the McKinny Vento definition, meaning that the students are facing home, um, housing insecure. You can see the increase, you know, from, um, um, 73%, you know, comparing, comparing 2019 to 20, you know, identified 76 students versus the 281 as of January. Um, then this increase of, um, numbers may be accredited to the, um, more training that we have been doing with, um, our staff in supporting the efforts of identifying families, um, as well as the lingering effects of the pandemic and the lack of housing affordability here in the region. It is also worth mentioning that the majority of our students who are identified as being McKinny Vento, have been doubled up or sharing the housing, um, with other persons, um, due to economic hardship. Many of these families may be working two jobs and living a checkback, you know, um, paycheck to paycheck. So they can, you know, meet their needs. Now we can jump into our journey.
Hey, everybody, me again. Um, as, as Michelle mentioned, I now working as a consultant with the district I started last month, but prior to that, I worked with Life Moves for eight years. And just for those of you that aren't aware about Life Moves, they're essentially the largest provider of services to individuals, couples and families that are experiencing homelessness in Santa Clara and San Mateo County. And, you know, I had the privilege for the first four years of working at three out of the four family shelters here in the county as a children's service coordinator or a case manager. And the past four years oversaw the upstream pilot program, which is essentially where this work began. So we're going to take you all on a brief journey. Uh, I forgot to mention, that is our team. You know, they're, they're not here today, but essentially the case managers and myself that, um, were working collaboratively to really launch and develop this pilot program at Kennedy Middle School along with Liz Calderon, who's here with us. So I just want to name them and the work that they committed those past four years. So a brief timeline to kind of take you all where we're at today. This work started back in 2019 with the Chain Zuckerberg Initiative or C Z I, conducting focus groups out in the community with families that were most impacted. And what those focus groups highlighted were, you know, the realities of housing insecurity in our region, that a majority of families that they spoke to were one paycheck away from being pushed into homelessness. So from those focus groups and with further, further research, um, C Z I partnered with the Redwood City School District, Life Moves and Chapin Hall out of the University of Chicago, who served as our research arm. And essentially with this collaboration, co-developed a pilot preventative program that looked to prevent students and their families from being pushed into homelessness by providing intensive case management services. So this started again in 2019. It was really late in 2019, early 2020, when this program actually launched at Kennedy Middle. And, you know, this pilot essentially allowed us to really go into the school and build out what is usually done out in the community through a nonprofit of providing case management services to over 120 families at Kennedy Middle. And also learning how to slow down and be responsive to the needs of community members by allowing them voice into how the program was being developed. So kind of fast forwarding a bit to 2022. And from the success of upstream, the Redwood City School District saw an opportunity to apply for a State Department of Education grant that was requesting proposals for innovative programs that was impacting students and family homelessness in their region. So it was really then that these conversations about thrive began to take place here with the district. And I'll also name that, as you'll hear, we were one of 20 local education agencies that were awarded this grant. So as I mentioned, this was a pilot program funded by C Z I. It was four years. So this program come fall 2023 was running out of funding. And it was also at this time that we were informed by Life Moves that they would be pulling out of the collaborative. And this was really because of their recommitment to focus on their core mission of serving shelter and outreach services in Santa Clara and San Mateo County. So with the success and learning lessons from upstream, along with the HIP grant, which is the homeless innovative program grant, this thrive model was born. So from the lessons learned from upstream, we have four key goals that thrive hopes to accomplish. The first, starting with the improved and increased identification of students and their families that are McKinny Vento and also experiencing homelessness here in our district. With that identification comes the opportunity to provide that family and community centered case management to work alongside families. So they can achieve their goals that allow them to reach housing stability. You'll see here on the right hand side, these two goals really work in tandem. I'm going to jump to the one on the bottom right of deepening and having intentional collaborations with our partners here in Redwood City. Those are, you know, really highlighting the key community partners that allow us to provide access and resources to our families, which speaks to that third goal of leveraging existing resources. Slow down a bit. So I feel another unique piece of this, right? We have our thrive model, but like a, a key ingredient here that allowed our success is leveraging the access and safety that these school communities provide. And, you know, to really think about it, at some point, a majority of individuals go through a school system. So it's really acknowledging that reality and putting our efforts when we talk about programming to invest in schools as an access and safety point, not just for students, but for their families and communities. That's essentially what this slide is sharing is that the Redwood City School District has done amazing job at establishing community schools. So it's aligning their visions of family centers with the vision of thrive and see that there is strong alignment in the way that we hope to provide open doors, a welcoming and safe environment for students and their families, but also be proactive and build understanding between community members and our stakeholders. This is again, the meat when we talk about the manual, which will again, we'll be talking about here briefly. This is really the meat of when we talk about the preventative model that saw a lot of success at Kennedy Middle. And it's unique in a sense that it addresses a huge system gaps that I think a lot of people aren't aware of. From my experience working in nonprofits, I've seen that a lot of programs are usually downstream based, meaning they're waiting for when families already have fallen into homelessness. This program looks to be preventative and get ahead of that crisis and the trauma that then transpires for students and their families. And that again, starts with identification. Being able to establish defined informal and formal methods of identification at the district that then leads to our ability to provide case management with our families. And for those of you unaware of case management, it's essentially a community worker that collaborates alongside a household, establishes a case plan that addresses the goals that they feel necessary to establish housing stability. Moving over to community empowerment, you know, these last two, last two variables I feel are, are huge and often aren't talked about. But community empowerment and what it means to see the community members that enroll into our programs as assets, acknowledging that they carry wisdom, experience and knowledge that is very useful and should benefit our communities. And then lastly, you know, just acknowledging cultural responsiveness, ensuring we have a team that is multicultural, that is bilingual, that is reflective of the communities we serve, and that again, that we're treating our community members as assets and as intentional stakeholders. Just very briefly, to supplement our case management work, this may look familiar to some of you from the multi-tiered systems of support we use with our students. Our program also uses a tiered framework, knowing very well that no two families' needs are alike. Um, we wanted to develop a framework that was coordinated and comprehensive in addressing the diverse situations and needs of families. So again, starting at the base, really three tiers where tier one is being more universal. So when school personnel or staff are identifying students and families that may need support, it's being able to utilize this framework to appropriately identify the resources that are needed. My last slide. I feel fortunate and privileged to be able to talk about impact. And it's just, you know, rewarding to be able to work in this space and collaborate alongside community members and colleagues. And this impact is represents representative of the four years that we operated at Kennedy Middle. And it starts, you know, at that bottom line with investing in program culture and development, hiring staff that aren't just competent in quality, but ensuring their wellbeing and investing in their training, which in leads to that intentional community collaborations I spoke on earlier. What that essentially allowed us to do was to serve around 130 families, which amounted to 400 individuals being impacted by this program. A majority of them being youth that were enrolled at different schools within Redwood City School District. So despite this program just being at Kennedy Middle, we also impacted students at some of our other schools, which, which speaks to the reach of this program. We provided over a thousand services that looked like eviction diversion, rental support, connecting to employment services, connecting to behavioral health, whatever resources that that family felt they needed to obtain housing or household stability. And finally, being able to name that 80% of the families that graduated our program were able to improve their housing or household situation by completing the goals that they established on their case plan. On that top line, just again, what we're doing here today is being advocates and building a dialogue around preventative work and the urgency and the relevance of being able to place that in a school setting. Thank you. Pass it over to Liz.
So in 2022, an application was submitted to this California State Department of Education for the Housing Innovative Program Grant, which is also known as HIP. The purpose of the HIP grant was to identify innovative practices focused on improving the educational stability, access, support and academic achievement of children and youth experiencing homelessness. We were one of 20 recipients that received the HIP grant. This is a two-year grant. During the first year, grant recipients focused on creating their toolkit or manual that can be accessed and shared with interest, interested parties. In the second year, grant recipients are responsible for presenting and sharing their toolkits regionally, state and potentially nationwide. This grant is set to expire the upcoming summer and fall. I will now speak about the different components related to our grant. The first component I will highlight is our manual. So as recipients of the grant, we were responsible for creating a manual within our first year. Our manual highlights R C S D's pilot program and the collaboration that aims to prevent youth and family homelessness through a defined identification process and tiered case management model. Our manual offers insight and guidance to district LEAs and community entities, entities interested in expanding collaboration and coordination within and across communities to better serve, support and collaborate alongside children, youth and their families who are at risk or experiencing homelessness. Simultaneously, our team created a page within the student services webpage as a way to increase visibility and awareness of our thrive program and manual. When on our webpage, individuals can either access, view or download our entire manual. They can also access, um, specific sections within the manual that they may be interested in. And they can also contact the thrive team if they have questions. Contact requests submitted via our website will be answered by our homeless innovative program and community schools data coordinator, Elsa, or the homeless innovative program consultant, Will. These positions were brought on board to ensure the fulfillment of the grant requirements. One of the areas of focus for Elsa, our homeless innovative program and community schools data coordinator is to deepen the cross collaboration between student services and the community school department. Elsa has also been working on building alignment of systems and protocols to implement this program district wide. Will, our homeless innovative program consultant, is working on creating the infrastructure and case management program that will be implemented through the California Community Schools Partnership Program Grant, also known as the C C S P P grant. Will is also working on identifying local champions within the city and county to sustain the work. Both Will and Elsa are currently working collaboratively on creating the presentations for upcoming conferences and on refining and updating the manual. As we enter our second year of the grant, we begin to submit applications to different conferences to fulfill our grant requirements of presenting our manual. We are happy to share that we were admitted to the conferences listed here. And now I will pass it on to Elsa.
Good evening. Um, so for my part, I just want to highlight a little bit of the work that we've been doing to work together as a team across departments. And to kind of just start, like, I think it's really important because community schools and student services center the needs of students to address barriers to school attendance and achievement. As departments, our efforts overlap across different areas. As an initial step, I've really focused on what current, current practices are in place where gaps exist and where there are opportunities to grow and leverage our resources. To get a better understanding, um, I've been trying to document and outline practices and streamline across our departments to ensure that we are addressing the needs of the youth that have been marginalized. Our focus has been really on McKinny Vento and housing insecure families. Our goal this year is, um, how do we collaborate across departments to refine, reflect on and disrupt working in silos? We're exploring ways we might be able to leverage the resources and identify people within the community and district to support our efforts and conversations. A key component to our work is building alignment. As you may know or have heard, the community schools department is a recipient of the C C S P P grant. Um, this grant is allowing for some of the work to continue past the pilot model. It is limited funding, but with the collaboration of student services and the community schools department, we're implementing components um, of the thrive model to continue providing a holistic case management program. As we integrate the model, we're looking at strengthening our McKinny Vento process, everything from the identification to the communication between district and school sites and school sites and district, as well as the resources that we have readily available to support our housing insecure families.
So I'm going to speak briefly about funding because this has been an endeavor that we've been working on and we have recently been able to secure funding to expand this program to four of our community schools, to Hoover, TAF, Garfield and MIT. That funding came from the California Community School, uh, Partnership Program Grant, which is five years. We're in our first year of, of the grant right now. It has, as you have seen, we are in the process of hiring two case managers that will be brought on board to see this program that we, that we've just described to you to, oh, um, between those four schools. And hopefully with Will's guidance, that program will be in place very soon. Oh, no, wrong one. I have to go back. Oh, there we go. So, um, as a second source of funding, we have applied for the Measure K grant, which became very competitive, we know, through the San Mateo, through San Mateo County to further expand the pro, the thrive program through, to all of our schools in the district. And we will hear about that supposedly in March, hear the results of that. Um, and then we've also, we are also in the process of applying for, um, support for our McKinny Vento students and families. We're looking to apply for the Education of Homeless Children and Youth Grant through the State Department of Education. This grant is for $50,000 and this will allow us to provide emergency client services to our families. I'll now pass it back to Elsa.
So looking ahead at our work, um, there are three main areas that our team is looking at. That is sustainability, prevention and impact. With sustainability, our team is looking at that long-term funding, some of which Michelle has mentioned, to sustain this initiative. Um, we're able to extend some pieces of this work with grants, but realize that there are limitations. With having grants as the only source of funding. As part of this sustainability, the posing question is, um, how do we manage to um, roles and that build and maintain infrastructures, alignment and maintain the model with the current reality? Um, while R C S D's initiative has been highlighted by the state, we're aiming to further develop and integrate into the R C S D, um, this proactive initiative. and integrate into the RCSD this proactive initiative to address the uncertainty of many of our families face. And so really the question that we keep posing is, who and where can we find folks to come to the table to discuss and push for funding? Prevention, when we talk about prevention, we often find ourselves in a reactive mode. Our goal through this initiative is to support families remaining in their homes, ensure students are attending and preventing the disruption to a child's learning. We aim to be proactive to address the pressing challenges of the communities marginalized by our systems and institutions. Our impact, studies show that youth who experienced housing insecurity are less likely to graduate high school and experience homelessness in adulthood. The impact is seen as many of the unsheltered adults that are visible in our communities today were once invisible students in our public schools. We strive to shift this reality by working with current youth and their families to secure safe and stable housing to prevent what would be the future single adult chronic homelessness. We want to ensure that the work we do contributes to their well-being and academic endeavors. Impact may not be fully understood right now, but we're working with building out and being intentional with the metrics and data collection with the hopes that our students continue to succeed and thrive.
This quote is from a participant from our Kennedy program that we had that was part of the program, and so I just wanted to leave that with you. And then I'll pass it on to Antonio. Elsa, just kidding.
We know that at the end of presentations, people often ask for feedback. We don't always do it because it's another thing for us to do, right? But we really are asking for the board, for the audience, for members online. If you have a moment just to complete this feedback form, this is part of the grant, kind of just requirements. And this is part of a study that we're participating with UCSF. UCSF has partnered with the California Department of Education to kind of look at the impact that models like the ones that we have with that information getting out into the community, the impact that it can potentially have or will have. So we welcome everyone's feedback. We also look at it to see how we can refine our presentations and how we share the material, especially as we're going into conferences.
Thank you again for the time, allowing us to present before you our Thrive model. I want to take the opportunity to thank Jasmine Vazquez, who is in the audience in Zoom, who is our social worker intern from San Francisco State. And I also want to thank Jocelyn Morales, who is the Student Services Admin Assistant, who works very closely with our unhoused families. And thank you to the team. We have a wonderful team. Thank you. And if you have any questions, we are here for.
Thank you very much for the presentation and all the information. Would somebody like to start with questions or comments?
Thanks again to the entire team. That was definitely a lot, and it's a lot better when you guys present than for us to be reading our package over the weekend. I just want to thank you tremendously for all the work that you're doing for, you know, 280-plus families or individuals that you've served. It's actually really heartfelt because we're not just educating our students, we're actually helping their families, right? And so I really do appreciate everything that you guys do. I think it's awesome because, you know, again, we're not just doing the academic piece, we're serving a lot more that actually helps with the academics. So it really is just a comment. And then when Will was talking about open door, I was just going to make a comment, not just the open door, but the windows, right? We saw it on the logo. Just a joke. So, I mean, definitely Redwood City, I think it's a welcoming community. So we could see from everyone that is involved in RCSD that everyone that's in here cares. So again, thank you.
Elisa, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thanks so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing. I guess my questions are around, well, actually kind of, you know, thinking about creating the manual and any data that you've collected does seem like it'd be useful. And then the question is, does it seem like the county and the state are open to supporting schools to be doing this work? Because we all know that the state cares about unhoused individuals and families and the county is actively working on coming to zero, you know, zero with unhoused. And it seems to me that schools are sort of a natural setting to protect the families and, like you were saying, to really help them before they become unhoused, right? So that kind of upstream model. So I'm just curious if you could speak to, I know we're applying for the Measure K monies, if you see other monies from the state. What I'd like to see is it's just not another unfunded mandate for schools to sort of be supporting our families once again without the county and the state's support to do this work, because it really is the wraparound services, right? But it makes sense for us to do them at the community schools. So if you could just speak to the state and county reception to what you've been doing and how more you think they'll support our schools.
Well, the initial proposal of the grant, when it was released two years ago, it was all for the services that all the LEAs are providing to our students being identified as McKinney-Bento. So the support that the state gave us was, this is the funds available for you to share any innovative program. So that was kind of like developing of, you know, your program and share it. The grant right now is to provide services for the families, similar to the ARP grant that was used during COVID. In the sense of continuing with this program model, we are looking for other funding resources. The state, unfortunately, the funding available for students who are unhoused is not big enough. They try to support, but you know, that's where, you know, they are. I don't know if you want to add or share something else.
Yeah, I'm going to be completely honest and, you know, starting last month with the district, but being able to work on the manual for the past year, it's been advocacy. It's been naming and bringing this to the attention of the state and county, that it's great that they're funding, you know, work to highlight innovative programs, but there needs to be like an implementation fund, because there are other entities that are also taking on the manual work, have amazing ideas that we know would benefit the community. So that's part of our job now is to go out there and reach out, you know, when I think here locally, I know the county has a center on homelessness and it's reaching out to them, begin to connect and highlight our work and, you know, advocacy, advocacy, bringing into people into conversation. We look to the board here, if there's, you know, any names or individuals that you feel we should be networking in, but it's kind of going back to just networking and spreading the word and building that dialogue. I don't know if anyone else wants to add on that.
I mean, I think regionally, right now, we met with the County of Ed and their Student Services across the county, and they expressed interest. And so there's opportunity, maybe there's power in numbers, right? So if across the county, other districts are saying like they're interested in this, how do we come collectively together to say like, hey, this is a model that it's not just impacting like Redwood City, it's the region. The other piece is with UCSF, we met with them just to kind of talk about like the grant, how it's rolled out, as well as how can the State Department of Ed continue to support. And a key piece that we have brought up is the sustainability and what does funding look like from the state? So those are all kind of just questions or things that have kind of are floating in the air. Again, I think like, as Will has mentioned, we want to invite people to those conversations. We think it's crucial. Like, it affects children, not just now, but in their future, just as much as like that student being able to be present and attending school and being able to engage in their education. So it's a posing question also for the board of where are those potential allies? We are trying to reach out to folks within the community, people like Terry at the Fair Oaks Community Center, but we know that this is going to require an effort from a lot of different folks.
Elsa, I know you're applying for Measure K, but before Warren Slocombe retires, I think you need to get him at the table. He's, you know, very much about the, you know, the Fair Oaks, Garfield area. And have you brought him to the table yet?
No, I've been saying that.
Yeah, yeah. He is one, I mean, he, his term is, you know, he is retiring at the end of his term, but definitely people do listen to Warren.
Mike, good day.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for all the work that you do for these children. The data are really clear about the need to go and address and resolve the issue. And I love seeing the impact data that you shared as well with, you know, 80% of the families seeing improvement. So thank you for the work and thank you for being data-driven in it.
Yeah, thanks Michelle, Liz, Antonio, Will and Elsa for presenting tonight on the Thrive program. I actually had a couple of questions about the current implementation right now. So with the CCSPP grant, are we expanding to the additional schools or are we already expanded to it?
So we have monies here. I'm pretty loud.
Sorry, the money's here, but we've had, it's taken us a little time to really, to do the job description, to get it flown, to do all that. So we're in the process now of hiring the case managers. The schools know that the program is coming. It's ready to go. The infrastructure is there that we put together. So now it's just starting the actual implementation.
Okay, got it. That makes sense. And then for Measure K, you said it would go to all school sites? Would that go to all school sites that are community schools or all school sites?
All school sites throughout the whole district. It's a rather large ask. The, it was a big grant.
It's a big grant, but I know a lot of people are asking, but I think we've got a good shot. Okay.
Write that down. We got a good shot. I'm just kidding. So, I mean, with that grant, we, it, we see that it would go out partnering with the community school grant, right? And so we can expand it to the rest of the schools and we're looking at some other infrastructures that we need to put in place to like data system and so forth. And we put all that in the grant.
Nice. Yeah, I'm always, it's always impressive how much we are doing through our community schools now and all these services that we can bring to the, to other schools is great. I really enjoyed hearing about, you know, the preventative model that you're following there. And it's clear that the identification part is really, you know, is really strengthening up. And, you know, I think that's obviously important to be able to prevent and have the impact that this program is trying to have. So thank you so much for sharing that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. This is really important work. I was, it's kind of an eye-opener to look at the numbers that you brought from in the 2019-20 school year, 76 homeless students to 281 this school year. Now, don't quote me on this, but I believe that when I started in 2015, we had 12. And the answer I kept getting to that was, well, they have to self-ID, so we just don't know. And I suspect, and it's probably you guys do too, that families that are doubling up, which currently is what, 95% of them, don't consider themselves homeless. And so they weren't self-IDing. And so I think the preventative and proactive work that you guys are doing now is crucial for these families and it's, it's really, really important. So please keep up the good work. I'm really happy to see that you're expanding to, I think, four other schools. Crossing my fingers for Measure K. Thank you.
You know, one quick thought, have you met with Noelia Corso, the supervisor out of Samatao area? And the reason I say that, and I'm sorry, there's a lot of noise in my background, but she's a real advocate for the families you're talking about. But also, one of the things the county is working on is, what do they call it, where they give a, they give a minimum amount of money to each family? They're actually doing some research right now on that, where they give, you know, $500 or $1,000 to families to see if that helps? Because if you look at the numbers and you think about, anyway, anyway, bottom line is I'm getting too much into the weeds, but I think Noelia would be a great person. I'm happy to introduce you if you haven't already spoken to her. So she's another county supervisor, like Warren, but in a different area. But I think she'd be very interested in this and could be an advocate for us.
We would love that. The introduction.
Great. I will send the information off to Michelle and then Michelle, you can.
Will do.
Work on it. Okay, thank you. Because I know I have Michelle's email at the ready.
No, just thank you for all the work you're doing. It's great. I mean, what Redwood City does compared to other school districts that are around us, you know, it's a little engine that keeps going, right? Right? We've always said that, money, even though when we've been really times when it has not been there, we kept it going. And it's, when you're at these conferences, it's, if someone really, you know, has a feeling acknowledges, try and dig a little deeper and see if they know of anybody that would come to the table. That's where we've been able in the past to meet others at conferences to lead as to someone who maybe have larger pockets and very interested. So, but good work, good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Will, please express our thanks to your team also.
One of them is now our community school coordinator.
All right. Thank you very much. We're almost, almost with that agenda. We can make it without a break. The audience, we've been meeting since five o'clock, so it's been a long meeting. Let's see, 12 consent items.
I'll move to approve. Seconded.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Marcus. Hi. Trustee Weekly.
Hi.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Vice President Walz.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. I'm sorry, that included 13.2 and 13.3 also. Action item 13.1, adoption of resolution number six. Who's, who's taking?
Yes, thank you. So this is a annual customary memo that is brought from Human Resources in the event of a layoff to determine what we call skipping criteria. It's a term noting the proficiencies and various credentials and needs around the district. And in, in the event of a layoff, will apply these criteria should there be individuals with equal status available for positions. So we do this as a preventative measure. So if, if and when we do need it, it's available and ready to go.
Are there any questions? This doesn't action items, we need a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve item 13.1.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Marcus.
Aye.
Trustee Weekly.
Aye.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Vice President Walz.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. Item 14.1, report from board members and superintendent. Who would like to start? Elisa, do you want to start?
Yes, I will go ahead and start. Let's see. I actually, John, Anna and I all attended a meeting with Burlingame and their superintendent and assistant superintendent. And we talked about dyslexia and they shared with us what they've been doing and we shared with them what we've been doing. And it was a great collaborative meeting and I think we left saying that we continue to work together. So anyway, that was good. I also met with an individual, his name is Drew, I'm not sure his last name, and he's with Sonar, which is a mental health platform for our, particularly our middle schoolers and high schoolers. And he's been working with Kennedy, our mental health counselor there, along with MIT. He met with some of the parents there, I know. And so we were just chatting about his platform and I wanted to make sure that he was connecting with any services that we had. And it sounds like he is doing that with, through our counselor, so that's good. And then, let's see, finally, I attended the CSBA board meetings last weekend. And I think I already reported that there is an artificial intelligence committee, so we'll be hearing more about that. They're just starting to meet. And, yeah, and I think that's about, there was a lot of administrative kind of things, but that's about it. Thanks.
Thanks, Elisa. Who would like to go next?
An acquaintance of mine.
An acquaintance of mine now works at T-Mobile and reached out about a project 10 million, which may involve an offer of devices and services to folks in our district. So I connected him with Dr. Baker. I also teed up a tour of KIP Exalancia and met with the staff there, got to see some of the classrooms and made a bunch of notes that I'm in the process of writing up.
I don't know. I don't know much to report. I went to the SMCSBA dinner they had, but yeah, mixer dinner, but that was about it.
And same here, that was when the San Mateo CSBA put together a mixer over at the County Office of Education. Anna and Antonio also were there. And it was basically Paul Bucanegra was talking about the, oh my God.
Is
The pipeline.
Yeah.
School to, yes. I was like, sorry, I just wanted like for a second. And basically just told us his story. And then I forget when was the last meeting we met? Because I'm like, I went to a Road City Together meeting. Was that before or after our meeting? That was on the 18th.
I think we met like the 24th.
Yeah, okay. So then maybe, never mind.
Okay, thank you. I attended a wellness committee meeting. It was mostly just updates from the partners. I can forward this slide presentation to everyone. And we had a brief bond committee meeting with just updates on solar project and Roy Cloud ADA and no decisions were made. That's all I have.
The other I have is at this point in time, today I was at the Chamber meeting, Chamber San Mateo, and they did report about people who are want to become teachers. They're thinking of no more having to take the CBAS test. It's not having to take it anymore. What you have on your transcripts from college should be sufficient. So that would be a barrier, that would lessen a barrier. Joan also talked about the return of, you know, retirees that don't have to wait six months, beginning July 1. So that was a kudos for those of us who are looking for teachers coming in the fall, those that retire, we can bring them right back. And then she also touched a bit about the TK and we talked about that, that Senator Becker is trying to move things forward to see if he can get community funded districts to also get the same status as LCFF. So we won't have to pay for our own teachers. It'll be coming from the state. So is there anything else? And there's $20 million in the budget moving forward for the new math framework. So yeah, so we'll see what we end up getting, if we end to get what our portion will be that way. And then, Elisa, you'll like this. Assemblyperson Pappen, her aide was there and talked about workforce housing and how they are collectively working with others to get something moved in the direction to where it's part of facilities when you pass a bond. And so he spoke about that and I, you know, thanked him. Thank you so much because I know it's because of our district, you're actually doing that. When Elisa has put a big plug, when we were at, as a CSBA, I think we were at, and you did a big, big push that said this needs to change and so forth. And, and he also got on a call with us and then you were in a call with them previously, last week, I think. And so it's moving.
That's a good point. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a pipeline. So looking forward to it. And all the other superintendents are on the call with us, said, yes, yes.
That's great. Glad to hear it, John.
All right, thank you. Item 15.1, information on San Mateo County Investment Fund. Are there any questions? Okay, correspondence. Anybody have anything?
Yeah, let's see. I received a few phone calls from a community member about Measure T and also about workforce housing.
I received a email from a parent at Norstar about her child and she wants to meet in person. She only speaks Spanish. My Spanish is not very good. So I was trying to find a translator, wasn't able to find one, but she is able to find a family member who is fluent in English, who will accompany her to my house tomorrow to go and talk about.
Just something you know, I mean, I can get back to you. There are several people around this table that are working with the same parent. Yeah. So yeah, it's, she's doing, Wendy's doing an investigation. Antonio's worked with the mom. Anna's worked with the mom. So we thought we've got this all taken care of.
She was pretty insistent wanting to meet me. I'll, I'll listen and I'll write, write up notes.
Okay, we'll talk about this later. Moving forward.
Nothing else? 17.1, possible other business suggested items for the future agenda?
I do have something. Perhaps we could at one point bring up back board policy on school of choice.
Is there? So I guess we can put, yeah, I guess what we could do is put it on the agenda and then get some feedback from you on what you'd like the board policy committee to look at. Because you're right, we should probably agendize it. And then because typically what happens is we get direction from the board or from staff or from some regulatory agency who would direct the policy committee to look at the policy and then make recommendations to the board for adoption. So, yeah, so why don't we agendize that? Another item I'll just mention that came up that the board policy committee has been asked to look at is the way we handle meetings and, and oral communication and public public comments, that there's some opportunities to refine, refine our practice, given what, actually it was Mike who, who brought this up, kind of hearing from some other school districts. And I've heard the same thing, actually. So, so that was one policy I wanted the policy committee to look at as well. So. Or Cecilia, if you want to just give Wendy your ideas, we could also just do it that way, right? And then we could meet with the policy committee. And then we could come back. Obviously, we'll have a conversation with the whole board.
Sure.
If that works.
Okay, thank you. Any other items? No, none. Okay. 18.1, changes to the board meeting calendar.
Antonio Perez, Director of Student Services, did request a closed session to go over the safety plans. For the February 28 board meeting, he requested 30 minutes. So if there's no other closed session that day, maybe 6:15 around there.
Okay. Does that work for everybody? The February 28th meeting. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Move, we adjourn. I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you. 8:40 PM.
Right. Bye, everybody. Thank you.